The October meeting of the Suffolk Planning Commission will now come to order. Our regular chairman, Mr. Singleton, is dealing with some family issues, so I will be sitting in his chair. Pray for the city of Suffolk. I'll now call on Commissioner Staler to deliver the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we gather here today at the Planning Commission's monthly meeting to make decisions for our city. Grant us the judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter placed before us, to act in accordance with what is the best for our community and our fellow citizens. We ask that you provide safety for our protectors, the police, and safety professionals, our military, both at home and abroad. Amen.
Thank you very much. Bob, will you now please call the roll?
Commissioner Creekmore.
Here.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Here.
Commissioner Edwards.
Present.
Commissioner Goodman.
Here.
Commissioner Hicks.
Here.
Commissioner Staler.
Here.
Chairman Rector.
Here.
Have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. Everybody has had an opportunity to hopefully read and review the minutes. If there are any corrections, we'll let them stand as approved, approved as presented. Our first two items on our agenda this afternoon are family transfers. They are not public hearings. The first one is Family Transfer Platt FTR 2021-002. Mr. Secretary, you please read the caption.
My pleasure. Family Transfer Subdivision Platt Request FTR 2021-002, submitted by Robert W. Dalton and Brenda K. Dalton, applicants and property owners, requesting a family transfer subdivision pursuant to Section 31 514 of the Unified Development Ordinance to approve Family Transfer Subdivision Platt to create one new parcel and associated right-of-way on property located on Dutch Road, zoning map 51, parcel 67. The affected property is further identified as being located in the Holy Neck Voting Borough, Zoned A Agricultural Zoning District. The city's 2035 Comprehensive Plan identifies this property as being located within the Rural Agricultural Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution approving a family transfer subdivision on property located off of Dutch Road, FTR 2021-002. And Brittany Collier will provide staff report. Ms. Chairman.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. This family transfer was submitted by Robert W. Dalton and Brenda K. Dalton to request to subdivide one new parcel for their son, Timothy D. Dalton, pursuant to Section 31-514 of the Unified Development Ordinance. The subject property is located in the Rural Agricultural Use District as designated by the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Mr. and Mrs. Dalton own the subject parcel depicted above, which is located at 1205 Dutch Road and is currently comprised of 13.75 acres. The proposed parcel for their son, Timothy Dalton, would be one acre in size, which is depicted in yellow, while Mr. and Mrs. Dalton would retain 12.75 acres as the parent parcel. The surrounding area is zoned agricultural, which consists of single-family dwellings, fields, and forested lands. Robert W. Dalton and Brenda K. Dalton received the property from George E. Yor in 2014, and additionally, Timothy D. Dalton has not previously received a family transfer parcel; therefore, they are eligible for the requested family transfer. As previously stated, the proposed parcel will be one acre in size, while the parent parcel will retain an acreage of 12.75 acres. The lot dimensions and building setbacks for the proposed new lot are consistent with the underlying agricultural zoning district. As the proposed parcel does not front along a public right-of-way, a 50-foot ingress/egress easement has been provided to establish access from Dutch Road to the proposed parcel. There is adequate area on the proposed parcel for a separate dwelling and drain field. A deed of gift has been prepared in conjunction with this plat, and it contains the required covenant that prohibits the transfer of the property within 10 years of its receipt, except in conformity with Section 31-514, subsection B.3 of the UDO. Lastly, all parties have completed a sworn affidavit acknowledging the purpose of this family transfer is to provide separate places of residence for the grantee and to keep the family estate within the immediate family. In summary, this request meets the criteria for a family transfer subdivision; therefore, staff recommends approval of FTR 2021-002. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. As I said before, this is not a public hearing, but is there anybody who would like to make a comment in support of this action? If not, I'll turn to the commissioners for questions, comments, or a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve Family Transfer Subdivision Platt FTR 2021-00002.
With a second from Commissioner Hicks. Mr. Gumas, will you ask for the vote, please? Call the vote.
Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Commissioner Staler.
Yes.
Chairman Rector.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Congratulations. This does not require action by City Council, and we will move on to the next item, which is the second family transfer, and it is FTR 2021-00005. Mr. Gumas, if you'll read the caption, please.
Family Transfer Subdivision Platt Request FTR 2021-005, submitted by H. Wayne Courtney of Courtney &amp; Associates, P.C., applicant, on behalf of S. Thomas Hart and Barbara S. Hart, property owners, requesting a family transfer subdivision pursuant to Section 31 514 of the Unified Development Ordinance to approve Family Transfer Subdivision Platt to create five new parcels and associated right-of-way on property located on Pittman Town Road, zoning map 74, parcel four. The affected property is further identified as being located in the Whaleyville Voting Borough, Zoned A Agricultural Zoning District. The city's 2035 Comprehensive Plan identifies this property as being located within the Rural Agricultural Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution approving a family transfer subdivision on property located on Pittman Town Road, FTR 2021-005. And again, Brittany Collier will provide staff report.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. This family transfer was submitted by H. Wayne Courtney of Courtney &amp; Associates, P.C., on behalf of S. Thomas Hart and Barbara S. Hart, to request to subdivide five new parcels for their grandchildren, Robert Thomas Mann, Ryan Nicole Vaughn, Hunter Cole Boyd, Jessica Taylor Boyd, and Corey Elton Hart, pursuant to the Section 31-514 of the Unified Development Ordinance. The subject property is located in the Rural Agricultural Use District as designated by the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Mr. and Mrs. Hart own the subject parcel depicted above, which is located on the northern side of Pittman Town Road and is currently comprised of 152.8 acres. The proposed parcels for their grandchildren would consist of 7.71, 7.78, 6.68, 6.66, and 13.42 acres, which is depicted in yellow, while Mr. and Mrs. Hart would retain 110.2 acres as the parent parcel. The surrounding area is zoned agricultural, which consists of single-family dwellings, fields, and forested lands. Mr. and Mrs. Hart received partial ownership of the subject property in 2004 from Blue Sky Timber, and then also in 2004 received full ownership of the subject property from Sustainable Forest, LLC. Additionally, Robert Thomas Mann, Ryan Nicole Vaughn, Hunter Cole Boyd, Jessica Taylor Boyd, and Corey Elton Hart are all above the required minimum age of 18 years old and have not previously received a family transfer parcel; therefore, they are eligible for the requested family transfer. As previously stated, the proposed parcels will be 7.71, 7.78, 6.68, 6.66, and 13.42 acres in size, while the parent parcel would retain an acreage of 110.2 acres. The lot dimensions and building setback lines for each of the proposed new lots are consistent with the underlying agricultural zoning district. As each of the proposed parcels front along Pittman Town Road, a 50-foot ingress/egress is not required nor provided. There is adequate area on each of the proposed parcels for a separate dwelling and drain field. A deed of gift for each of the proposed parcels has been prepared in conjunction with this plat, and each contains the required covenant that prohibits the transfer of the property within 10 years of its receipt, except in conformity with Sections 31-514, subsection B.3 of the UDO. Lastly, all parties have completed a sworn affidavit acknowledging the purpose of this family transfer is to subdivide separate places of residence for the grantee to keep the family with, keep the property within the family estate. In summary, this request meets the criteria for a family transfer subdivision; therefore, staff recommends approval of FTR 2021-005. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. As I said, this is not a public hearing, but is there anybody here that would like to make any comments regarding this request? If not, I'll turn to the commissioners for questions, comments, or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of FTR 2021-00005.
Second. Yeah, a second from Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Mr. Gumas, will you call the roll, uh, call the vote, please?
Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Commissioner Staler, excuse me.
Yes.
Chairman Rector.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Congratulations. This does, like the other one, does not require City Council approval, and you can proceed on. We will now open the public hearing portion of the meeting, and I'd like to remind everybody that the Suffolk Planning Commission meetings are videotaped and televised for public viewing. Our first order of business under the public hearings is rezoning request, RZN 2022-002, conditional, Meadows at Moore's Point. Mr. Gumas, will you please read the caption?
Rezoning Request, RZN 2020-002, conditional, Meadows at Moore's Point, submitted by Bob Arnett, Moore's Point, LLC, applicant, on behalf of Moore's Point, LLC, and Jason Hewson, property owners, in accordance with Sections 31 304 and 31 305 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Excuse me. To rezone and amend the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk in order to amend the previously approved proffered conditions for property located at 117, 118, and 119 C Street. Zoning map 36A, parcels 188, 189, asterisk 190, 202A, asterisk 1, and 202B, asterisk 1. The property, the purpose of this request is to remove the previously established maximum density restrictions. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Cypress Voting Borough, Zoned RU Residential Urban Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area, Inner Ring Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to rezoning request, RZN 2020-002, conditional. And Amy Boekikio will provide staff report.
Good afternoon. The purpose of this conditional rezoning request is to amend the previously approved proffered conditions for the Meadows at Moore's Point Townhome Community located on C Street. The property is located one block north of Portsmouth Boulevard, and it's part of the Inner Ring Suburban Use District as designated by the Comprehensive Plan. The subject properties, as mentioned, are located at 117, 118, and 119 C Street, so they are located on both sides of C Street, and they are currently zoned RU conditional. The combined site acreage is about 9.4 acres. To the south of the property, you may find the Suffolk Auto Exchange and the Raceway, which are both zoned B.2 general commercial. The surrounding properties to the north, east, and west are comprised of single-family neighborhoods zoned either RLM, residential low-medium density, RC, residential compact, or RU, residential urban. This property has been party to several previous conditional rezoning requests over the past five years, and that is mostly attributed to the fact that the developer was able to acquire additional property over time in order to enlarge their development. One of the past rezonings allowed 70 single-family attached units in particular, and the other rezoning allowed 15 single-family attached units, to where a total of 85 single-family attached units have already been permitted. The previous rezonings approved a residential density of roughly nine units per acre, which was below the maximum that is allowed in the RU zoning district of 10.9 units per acre. An engineering plan has also been approved for the construction of the 85 units, and so if you've had an opportunity to visit the property, you'll see that many of the lots are already graded, and there's curb, and I think a base layer of asphalt in place out there. Upon further design and engineering performed by the developer, they decided to submit the current proffer amendment request in an effort to allow the potential for 17 additional dwelling units if the previously approved density limitation were to be removed and the site were developed in accordance with the underlying RU zoning density that's allowed. Here you have the first page of the rezoning exhibit submitted for this application. This depicts two parcels that are located on the west side of C Street, and this exhibit also contains a note that the amendment is not a request to reclassify the zoning of the property, rather, the purpose is to amend proffers. Here you have the second page of the rezoning exhibit, which depicts the properties that are located on the east side of C Street, and it also contains the same note stating that this is a request to amend proffers. Staff has made the following findings during the review of this application. The recommended density for the Inner Ring Suburban Use District is 6 to 12 units per acre, and so this request complies with the use district. This site is also one block from a prominent mixed-use corridor of Portsmouth Boulevard, and it has quick access to Route 58, such that a density which is towards the higher end of the inner ring density spectrum is appropriate at this location. Additionally, it is important to note that the property is located near the Core Support Use District, which recommends higher densities between 12 to 24 units per acre. Staff finds that this development will continue to offer a logical transition in land uses from the commercial uses that are present along Portsmouth Boulevard to the single-family detached neighborhoods that are located farther north. As previously mentioned, the city granted approval of an engineering plan already for the construction of 85 units, as adequate public facilities existed or are being developed as part of that engineering plan. Therefore, only the proposed additional 17 units are subject to a review of adequate public facilities. Adequate water, sewer, stormwater management, and roadway access exists or is being constructed as part of the already approved engineering plan. The Departments of Public Works, Engineering, Traffic, Utilities, Fire, and Planning expressed no concerns with regards to a potential increase of density here at this location, with the exception of public schools. This site is assigned to Macben Elementary School, John F. Kennedy Middle School, and Kings Fork High School. Kings Fork High School is the only school with a deficit in capacity when accounting for committed development in the students that are gen, or expected to be generated by this request, which is estimated at one and a half students. The cost to advanced capacity is determined by the Applicable Capital Improvements Plan at the time that the application was submitted, which was the fiscal year 2020-2029, CIP, being that this particular rezoning was submitted in January of 2020. So we are referencing a former CIP cost. In this CIP, the cost to advanced capacity for a high school student is $28,000. The cost to advanced capacity multiplied by the student generation rate outlined in the UDO for attached dwellings, which is .091 students, would equate to a cost of $2,548 per dwelling unit to advanced capacity at the high school level. Above you will see the first page of several pages that are part of the proffer statement. This is a screenshot, and for the entire statement, it is included in your staff report. The first new proffer is outlined in red above. This proffer states that the property shall be developed in accordance with a maximum density of the RU district, which is 10.9 units per acre. Based on the size of this property, at about 9.4 acres, a maximum of 102 units may be constructed, and since 85 units have already previously been approved, this amendment will result in no more than 17 additional units. So that's my summary of what is stated in proffer number one. The remaining proffers shown on this sheet are the same proffers that were part of the previous rezoning application, so those were still included with this proposed update. The second new proffer is also outlined in red above, and this pertains to school impacts. The developer has volunteered to make the recommended cash contribution for the deficit at the high school level, which will equate to $2,548 per dwelling unit, and this shall be paid prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, beginning with the 86th dwelling unit. Finally, the proffer statement includes strike-throughs of the two previous proffers from the past rezonings. One of them is shown here, and then this is the second proffer statement that will be superseded by the request today if approved. In summary, this rezoning request to amend and replace the previously approved proffers associated with conditional rezonings, RZN 2018-20 and RZN 2019-2, is found to be consistent with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. The existing RU conditional zoning classification remains suitable for this site, and the slight increase in density is appropriate, given that the impacts on public facilities will be properly mitigated. Therefore, staff recommends approval of RZN 2020-2 with the proffers contained in your staff report. That concludes my information. I'll stand by to answer any questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Boekikio. We will now open the public hearing. We will allot 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and then five minutes for rebuttal to the opponents. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on behalf of this request?
Yes, um, excuse me. Mr. Today's Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, it's a pleasure to be here today. My name is Greer Ferguson. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Ferguson, Rolls &amp; Reins at 332 West Constance Road here in Suffolk. I think Ms. Boekikio did an excellent job of telling what we are attempting to do through, over the time. Obviously, this project's been going on a good while, but what my clients are attempting to do, they've acquired new land over time and re-engineered the site, and they believe this is a better plan for everyone. So what we're asking to do is remove the proffer that limits us to the 87 lots, or 85 lots, excuse me. I don't think we're going to go all the way to what we could. I think we're going to probably add about 12 lots is what the new plan would show. But if we do, we would be permitted to. You know, what impacts will we have? Well, the area, that area is obviously already fits into the inner growth circle, and so we're there, and I think this is the kind of development that the city is looking for in this particular area. And my clients are just trying to do the best they can to add to what has already gone on in that area right there as you enter the city from the east side. The, we, we made a proffer on the schools. We would, whatever the cost per student is, it's going to come out to a little over $2,500 per student, per, excuse me, per building lot. Once we go over 85, we have proffered to pay that up to the maximum if we get there. We, we will be adding, even though it's previously proffered, we are adding, which was not required by traffic, a right-hand turn lane so that traffic exiting C Street can come into the city of Suffolk with a turn lane that's 150 feet long. I really don't think it's necessary for me to go into any more details. I think Ms. Boekikio did an excellent job. Her report is well-written. I would rather, I would prefer just reserve for questions, if there are any questions regarding this request. No questions? I'll sit down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. We'll reserve questions for the end of the public hearing. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on behalf of this request? If not, is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition to this request? If not, Mr. Ferguson, do you have anything that you wish to add?
The only thing I always add, thank you for your time, and we would appreciate approval. Thank you very much.
We will now close the public hearing. I turn to the commissioners for questions, comments, or a motion.
Just one question of traffic engineering, I guess. I know that there's a right turn lane, but in all of our discussions about this project, haven't we asked about a light? At C Street and Portsmouth Boulevard?
Yes, ma'am. As part, as part of the original application, that was analyzed, and it did not meet warrants for a traffic signal at that time. Basically, what we have is a, you have a delay, a bit of a delay, being able to pull out from there, and adding that right turn lane reduces that delay by allowing both left and right turns at the same time.
Okay. Okay. Got you.
While you're at the podium, does any of the commissioners have any questions? Or a traffic engine? Do we have questions, comments, or does anybody prepare to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that RZN 2020-002, conditional, with the submitted proffers, be approved.
Motion by Mr. Creekmore, seconded by Mr. Eberwine. Mr. Gumas, will you call for the vote, please?
Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Commissioner Staler.
Yes.
Chairman Rector.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of seven to zero.
That will move on to City Council at which of their meetings, Bob.
Don't have a calendar in, in front of me.
But it will move on to City Council.
Yes, sir. Second, second meeting.
Of November.
Yeah. November 17? November 17.
Thank you. Our next public hearing is rezoning request, RZN 2021-012, conditional, Northgate Commerce Park, Tractor Supply Retail Store. Mr. Gumas, if you'll read the caption, please.
Rezoning Request, RZN 2021-012, conditional, Northgate Commerce Park, Tractor Supply Retail Store, submitted by Wendy Fulton, TKC, CCXLX3 LLC. I don't read Roman numerals, I apologize. Applicant, on behalf of McGorman Group Incorporated, property owner, in accordance with Section 31 304 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District to B2 General Commercial Zoning District for a portion of property located at 5045 Nansman Parkway, zoning map 20, parcel 22J. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Cypress Voting Borough, Zoned M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Zone M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to rezoning request, RZN 2021-012 conditional. And Alexis Baker will provide the staff report.
Good afternoon, Chairman, and members of Planning Commission. As mentioned, the subject property is located at 5045 Nansman Parkway, zoning map 20, parcel 22J. The applicant is requesting to conditionally rezone and amend the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from M2 Heavy Industrial District to B2 General Commercial Zoning District to allow for retail sales and services. Specifically, the applicant had mentioned that this would be a location for a tractor supply retail store. The city's 2035 Comprehensive Plan identifies this property as being located within the Northern Growth Area Suburban Use District. Again, as mentioned, the property is currently zoned M2. A vacant residential house and agricultural structures are present on the 31.79-acre site. Approximately 4.3 acres, subject to the rezoning request, are vacant. To the north is residential low-medium zoning district. Specifically, there is a church and a parcel with a vacant residential structure and agricultural structures. The parcel directly across the street, you'll see again, it will be heard today under rezoning request, RZN 2021-015. To the south is zoned Heavy Industrial Zoning District, M2. There's a warehouse. To the east, office and warehouse, zoned Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Also on that property is a convenience store with gasoline sales, a future convenience store with gasoline sales, and a fast food restaurant with a drive-thru. That was just recently zoned a general commercial zoning district. To the west is a warehouse and lumber storage yard and manufacturing, and that, again, is zoned Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Little bit of history of the property. The subject property is within the Northgate Commerce Park. The Northgate Commerce Park was, was originally established in 2000 by what was at the time known as the Industrial Development Authority, now known as the Economic Development Authority. The original concept for the Northgate Commerce Park with over 470 acres was to attract small industrial and manufacturing operations, offering sites with options of 6 to 50 acres. Since 2019, at least 10 sites have been developed for industrial uses there. Subdivision and site plans have been approved for this area since 2000. Recent application for Northgate Commerce Park, approved in 2019, was for a subdivision variance to grant relief from a maximum cul-de-sac and dead-end street standards on property located to the south at intersection of Nansman Parkway and Shoulders Road. However, the most recent subdivision application was, was for the current configuration of the subject property, zoning map 20, parcel 20, 22J, from zoning map 20, parcel 22. Also on that site that we mentioned before was, under RZN 2020-007, which was approved on January 20th, 2021, was a 4.06-acre portion of zoning map of the, the current parcel's zoning map, 20, parcel 20, 22J. That was rezoned from M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District to B2 General Commercial Zoning District, and that was to allow for a convenience store with gasoline sales and a fast food restaurant with a drive-thru. Finally, there was an engineering plan approved on November 13th, 2021. The engineering plan included plans for a 50-foot future right-of-way intersecting with Northgate Commerce Park, known as Mile Way. And you'll see that road on the conceptual plans that says "future right-of-way," but it, it's, it will be known as Mile Way. A one-story building with outdoor sales in display is proposed for the site. It is anticipated that the facility will employ approximately 7 to 10 employees with store hours from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., seven days a week. While this conceptual plan was not proffered, the applicant has proffered to install a shared entrance on the previously rezoned site, RZN 2020-002. If I can show you up there. It's right there. An additional access point is shown on the conceptual plan from Mile Way, labeled on the plan as a future right-of-way intersecting with Northgate Commerce Parkway. The application was evaluated for compatibility with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. The Comprehensive Plan sets specific themes and policies related to land use, transportation, open space, and the environment that should be considered when contemplating a rezoning application. Relevant to this application are the following. Policy 2-1, keep development focused in designated growth areas in the city. The rezoning request is within the Northern Growth Area Suburban Use District. B2 uses, including smaller retail businesses and professional offices, are appropriate in this area. Next, policy 2-2, assure that development occurs in a predictable and orderly manner, and policy 2-3, promote a balance of residential and non-residential land uses. The rezoning request from the M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District to the B2 General Commercial Zoning District ensures that less intense uses create a buffer between industrial and RLM Residential Low-Medium Zoning District. The existing M2 zoning district is in a special district defined in the 2035 Comprehensive Plan as an area allowing for single-use and large-scale uses, such as industrial areas, office parks, and large institutional uses, created as a response to the needs and activities of the general population, and located in areas adjacent to adequate rail and interstate transportation. For these special districts, extra care should be taken at their edges to respect adjacent activities and neighbors, and buffer any impacts, which in this case can be bolstered by the proposed B2 zoning district. While the B2 uses would in general be complementary to the RLM zoning district to the north, the applicant has proffered to only allow retail, sales, and services, eliminating an extension, extensive range of uses allowable under the B2 zoning district. For example, more, more intense uses allowed in the proposed zoning district but inappropriate in this area and in conflict with the zoning, surrounding zoning, include mixed-use dwellings allowing for dense multifamily development and student generation, regional-scale shopping centers, department stores, big-box retail with 120,000 square feet or greater, and hospitals, hospitals. Again, these uses are precluded from the area due to the proffer. The proposed tractor supply retail store would also add additional job opportunities for the area, and would provide additional services to the surrounding industrial and residential users. The estimated 4.3-acre site, subject to the rezoning request, would be required to comply with parking requirements, architectural standards, and additional setbacks and landscaping requirements due to its location in the special corridor overlay districts. Examples of SCOTD requirements specific to the subject property include a 30-foot SCOTD setback and 15-foot vegetated landscape buffer from Nansman Parkway, and visual screening of the loading area and mechanical equipment. Additionally, no portion of the future building constructed, should be constructed of unadorned cinder block or corrugated and/or sheet metal to be visible from any adjoining property of public right-of-way and driveways. And parking areas shall be paved with concrete, the tuminous, concrete, or a similar material with concrete curb and gutters installed around the perimeter of all driveways and parking areas. And finally, policy 2-4, promote compatibility and land use patterns. In Section 31-403 of the UDO, the intent of the M2 zoning, zoning district is to provide an environment for, for industries that is unencumbered by nearby residential or commercial development. The M2 zoning district must be located in areas where conflicts with other uses can be minimized to promote, to promote orderly transitions and buffers between uses. The B2 zoning district would present a more aesthetically pleasing development that could buffer residential uses with conflict from heavy industrial uses permitted in the M2. When evaluating the rezoning application for compatibility with the UDO, and specifically the adequate facilities ordinance, there were no concerns regarding public utilities, stormwater, transportation, or schools. The applicant has voluntarily proffered to allow the development of the subject property to be only used for retail sales and services. Additionally, the applicant has proffered to install a shared entrance for direct access to Nansman Parkway, as illustrated in the traffic impact study updated September 2021. With that said, based on this review, staff finds that the conditional rezoning request is consistent with the principles of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. In addition, adequate public facilities have been addressed with this proposed rezoning, and staff recommends approval of this conditional rezoning application with the submitted proffered conditions. This concludes my presentation. Staff will stand by for any questions after the public hearing. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Before we open the public hearing, Officer Jackson, is there anybody out in the lobby that is not inside the chambers that perhaps would like to speak to this?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Officer Jackson. At this time, we will now open the public hearing. Once again, we offer a total of 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttal by the opponents, uh, proponents. Is there anybody here who would like to speak on behalf of this application?
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. My name's Brian Lane, representing today on behalf of the, I'm an agent representing on behalf today of the owner and also the, the user for the property who could not be here today. There's not a whole lot I can add to that staff report that Ms. Baker put together. That was an excellent summary of what we're bringing before you today. Just what I would like to add to that, this is for an exact, what, what she said, is a tractor supply retail store. Y'all familiar with the one that exists over on Pruden Boulevard? I hope y'all are happy with Tractor, because Tractor's absolutely happy with you guys, and they want to expand. We feel like this is a great site, but we, we didn't get here today with this approval very easy. We had a lot of things to work through, some existing conditions we had to massage around, and there were also SCOTD requirements that are always tricky. And I do appreciate staff, staff's patience and willingness to work with us, because we've arrived here today with an application we think really brings something nice to the city, and we do ask for y'all's support. I would like to add that we have contacted the Northgate Property Owners Association through the help of, with the help of, of Greg Bird, and we, we sent out the package you see today, and we didn't receive any concerns or objections to what we bring before you. With that being said, I'll stand by for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on behalf of this rezoning request? If not, is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition to this request? If not, Mr. Lane, would you like to offer any more additional comments in support of this rezoning request?
No.
We will now close the public hearing. I turn to the commissioners for questions, comments, or a motion.
Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question of Ms. Baker. I want to make sure that the engineering plan has already been done and has already been approved, because I read November 13th, 2021, and then you said it, November 13th, 2021, so I said, okay, I'm not exactly crazy, so which is...
Yeah. It, it should have, it, it has all...
Last year?
Yeah. It should have already been approved.
Okay.
That was a... Let me check. Yeah, it was, yes. Thank you for that.
Thank you for that. I thought I'd pulled a Rip Van Winkle and had been asleep.
With that said, I'd like to offer a motion to approve RZN 2021-012 with any conditions.
Second. Second. We have a motion from Commissioner Hicks and a second from Commissioner Eberwine. Discussion of the motion. Now, Mr. Gumas, will you call the roll, call for the vote?
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Chairman Rector?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of seven to zero.
All right. It will go before City Council on the 17th of November. Bob, it was a trick question before. I actually had that information all the time. Our next item of business is rezoning request, RZN 2021-013 conditional, Prospect West. Mr. Gumas, will you please read the caption?
Rezoning request, RZN 2021-013 conditional, Prospect West, submitted by Bob Burnett, Moores Point LLC applicant and property owner, in accordance with Section 31304 and 31305 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to rezone the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from RLM Residential Low-Medium Density Zoning District to RU Residential Urban Zoning District for property located on Prospect Road, zoning map 35, parcel 92. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Cypress Voting Borough, Zone RLM Residential Low-Medium Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Inner Ring Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to rezoning request, RZN 2021-013 conditional. Grace Brazil will provide staff report.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. This request is to conditionally rezone a property located along Prospect Road from RLM Residential Low-Medium Density Zoning District to RU Residential Urban Zoning District to develop a single-family subdivision. As identified in the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, the property is located within the Inner Ring Suburban Use District, which recommends a density of 6 to 12 dwelling units per acre. The property is 3.2 acres in size and is currently a vacant field. To the south and east are residential properties with single-family dwellings zoned RLM. To the west is property zone B2, and then to the north are age-restricted garden apartments zoned RU. The requested RU zoning district allows for a maximum of 10.9 units per acre, which aligns with the use district. So by right under the RLM zoning district, the property can yield nine dwelling units. With the proposed RU zoning, the property could potentially yield 35 dwelling units. However, the applicant has proffered that no more than 15 single-family detached dwelling units will be constructed, which this means that there's going to be a total of six more units that can be developed on the property than what the existing zoning would allow for. The request as proffered would have an overall density of 4.6 units per acre. The Comprehensive Plan sets specific themes and policies and have been considered when reviewing this rezoning application. Looking at specifically Policy 2-1, Action 2-1A, and Policy 2-4, which states to ensure that the city's land use regulations support higher-density slash-intensity development in focused growth areas, and to promote compatibility and land use patterns. As proffered, the density falls below the maximum of 10.9 units per acre for the RU zoning district, as well as the proposal does not fall within the 6 to 12 units per acre as recommended for the use district. It is important to note that there are several factors that limit the property from realizing a density that is more compatible with the Inner Ring Suburban Use District. These factors include its overall size, a limited amount of road frontage that limits the ability to construct a secondary access, and all surrounding properties have been developed, which means that this limits the property's ability to accommodate needed infrastructure improvements required to yield a higher number of units. With that being said, the rezoning request would yield a density higher than the existing RLM zoning district. Additionally, the proffered unit type is compatible with the surrounding single-family dwellings to the south and to the east. to the south and to the east, as well as the proposed RU zoning district would provide a continuation of the existing RU zoning to the north. As such, the proposed development overall meets the intent of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, as this request would allow for a higher density development than the existing zoning district, would provide a continuation of the RU zoning district to the north, and is compatible with the single-family dwellings. A conceptual layout was submitted but not proffered, which does show a total of 15 lots and is consistent with the overall request. The layout as shown does not meet connectivity, which will require a subdivision variance be submitted and approved prior to plan and final plat approval. With that, the development overall will require full plan review with regard to all design and improvement standards as outlined in the UDO. In addition to the maximum number of dwelling units to be constructed and the dwelling unit type, the applicant has also proffered a cash contribution to advance capacity for the high school that will be impacted from the proposed development. The applicant has also proffered a right-turn lane on Portsmouth Boulevard from Prospect Road and modifications to the existing median on Portsmouth Boulevard. Lastly, the applicant has voluntarily proffered various exterior building materials. So no rezoning request should be approved, which would cause a reduction in the levels of service standards for any public facility impacted. With regard to school impacts, the property is assigned to Macben Elementary School, John F. Kennedy Middle School, and Kings Fork High School. As previously stated, the property by right can yield nine dwelling units. So after considering the number of dwelling units proffered and the number of dwelling units permitted by right, a total of six dwelling units have been evaluated when considering the potential impacts to public facilities. The proposed development as proffered would generate one elementary school student, one middle school student, and one high school student. After considering the current school enrollment, the total committed development, and the students to be generated from the proposed development, there is capacity at the elementary school and middle school level, but there is a deficit at the high school level. Sorry about that. The adopted CIP contains a project that would create a new high school to accommodate 2,000 students. Based on the project cost and the capacity of the new high school, the cost per student is roughly 29,000. The applicant has proffered the appropriate cash contribution for the advancement of school capacity. Therefore, public facilities for schools are adequately being met. In regards to traffic, a traffic impact assessment was provided and states that all intersections are expected to operate and that a turn lane is not warranted for the site. The applicant, however, has proffered to install a right-turn lane on Portsmouth Boulevard at Prospect Road and to modify the median on Portsmouth Boulevard to allow vehicles to make a left across Portsmouth Boulevard from Prospect Road. The Traffic Engineering Division has no objections to this rezoning request. Lastly, Public Utilities and Public Works has no objections. In summary, the proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding single-family dwellings in the immediate area. Additionally, the impacts to the schools from this proposed residential development are being mitigated, and all adequate public facilities are met. Staff finds this proposal meets the intent of the provisions of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Development Ordinance and recommends approval of rezoning request, RZN 2021-013. That concludes my presentation. I'll be available after the public hearing to answer any questions you guys may have. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Brazil. Officer Jackson, is there anybody out in the lobby that would like to speak?
No, sir. Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. We will now open the public hearing. Once again, we will offer 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttal by the proponents. Is there anybody who would like to come forward to speak on behalf of this request?
Good afternoon again, Mr. Today's Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Greer Ferguson. I'm attorney with Ferguson Rolls and Raines at 332 West Constance Road here in Suffolk, and I am here today as a proponent of this application on behalf of my clients. What we're trying to do, and it was well said by Ms. Brazil, is just add, we want to put in detached dwellings in this. You know, all of these developments, the developers go out and they have to decide which can work best here, what does the city need, and every development's different. So we really don't have any desire to maximize what RU could do, which is what we're asking for. All we're asking to do is go from 2.9 to 4.6 houses per acre, and what we will be doing is putting detached homes on this property. It'd be a total of 15 homes as is proffered. We could do about nine or 10 right now without doing anything to it, and we just think it would be a better development if we could get the 15 lots in there. The proffers are pretty extensive of what we are willing to do, but the main thing is we will meet the schools' needs for the students. I think that what we're asking for just will add one student to the high school. That's pretty much it at this point, and we would pay for that as each particular unit is sold. And we would also be adding a right turn off of 58, which was not required. So we're going to give 58 a right turn lane to come into this, just like we added a right turn lane off of C Street coming out the last time. This time, we're putting the right turn lane so that 58 can empty safely in here, and we believe that will make it much safer, because busy roads with no turn lanes can be dangerous, and we, despite not being required to do it, we are doing that. The materials, we think, have been proffered are high-quality materials. It's kind of difficult to follow up on what Ms. Brazil said, because she's covered all of the bases. I would prefer to just come back and answer questions. We think this is a good development for the street. I do like to add that there is, there are only five houses on this street. I don't know if any of y'all, maybe all of you have gone and taken a look at Prospect. It's kind of a, not a lot going on, other than Magnolia Gardens and five homes and a couple of open lots like the one we have here. A lot of the other land that's on Prospect Street right near Magnolia Gardens is actually wetlands, and so that's not going to probably be developed. We would, the traffic in there because of Magnolia Gardens, there's a fair amount of traffic already coming in and out of here. I don't believe what we're doing is going to have a big impact on the traffic when you add in what's already there for Magnolia Gardens between staff and visitors. So we think this was a good development for this area. I know that we did speak to three out of five of the residents, and we attempted to contact, and we will continue to try to contact, so the five residents, we've spoken to three. I think one may be here today, and I know that Mr. Arnett had spoken to him. He had some concerns about traffic in general, and I'll let him address that if he chooses to, but that ends my presentation at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on behalf of this rezoning request? If not, is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition to this request?
Sorry, this is my first time doing this. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Corey Anup. I live at 200 Prospect Road. Obviously, I'm in opposition of the building. First, I'd like to say I'm not in opposition of, you know, building stuff up and trying to make things a better place. I wrote a few things down, so I don't lose my train of thought, and I don't want to take away from the others that are here. A few things that I have an issue with is the road that we have built on, on Prospect Road. It's only approximately 1,100 feet long. Where they're trying to put the road in to put these 15 houses is approximately 300 to 350, give or take where you measure from, in. And if you look at Mr. Arnett's plan, it's saying that approximately 182 times cars are going to travel in and out every day from those 15 houses. So my driveway being just after this, now I got to contend with 182 vehicles essentially coming in and out in a 300, 350-foot spot for me to get out on my little road. Also, the problem is, is the road's not really built like a normal road engineering-wise. It seems like it's just asphalt put over dirt, so the road is starting to crumble and decay at this point in time. With having more traffic and more issues, the road's just going to get worse. Also, you're almost unable to pass two cars at the same time. So you essentially almost have to pull off to the grass for one car to pass on the road for the other car to get in or out, as well as having the retirement community and some of the older citizens that live on the road, we have a lot of fire trucks and ambulances that come in every day. Soon as one of those comes on the road, you can't, it's impassable to get on the road, as well as the buses that come in from there, the buses that are coming in and out constantly takes a lot and has a lot of traffic on this short little road that we have. The other thing is I brought, well, I didn't bring, but I looked up statistics for Suffolk for 2000, it's 12 to 2020 for fire and police, and the calls just keep increasing. If you look back to what you guys did on for the rezoning for 202002 and doing for the 85 houses on C Street, that's just bringing more flow of traffic in on Portsmouth Boulevard and 58. If you're adding this, it's bringing even more, and they're trying to do the rezoning, which you guys currently have a place behind the food line right now, which is going to bring in more traffic and have more ingress and egress on the road. My problem with it is, is that the only way to get in and out of there is 58. If an issue happens on 58, or for the job I do, if a plane goes down and I got to shut down going westbound on 58 for three days, how are we going to get in and out? Because Portsmouth Boulevard and Nansman Parkway, with all the schools in it being one lane, it'd be too much for commercial traffic plus us. The same thing with trying to go all the way up to the James River Bridge, coming down 32 and 10, it would be impossible for us to keep getting home. I'm all about development, but developing that much in that small of an area and then putting everything on that road is just to get, is just to be too much at that point in time. What else do I have here? Properties around us. My other issue with doing all the, adding the 85 on C Street plus the residential compact behind the food line and all the other stuff, is that how is that going to affect, because Suffolk has allowed 200 police officers right now, and there are approximately like 180, give or take one or two, I don't know the exact number today. So, and they're getting more calls for service. I guess my question would be, even with the fire departments, are we adding more police to the force? Are we adding more firefighters? Because the closest fire station is down here to get all the way to our house. You're adding all these residential dwellings, or trying to add all these residential dwellings. I mean, that's more for EMS and fire to take on, and, I mean, I'm almost 50 years old at this point in time, and we're all getting older, and the more people that move in, these more call for service that people are going to have to go through. I think that's most of what I have to say. One last thing. The majority, and there's technically six houses on Prospect Road at this point in time, the houses that are there, 1926, 1964, 1967, 1968, 2005, and mine, 2014. So the community of the people that have lived there, minus myself, have been there for 20-plus, if not more, years. And also, having the retirement community coming in and out of there, I mean, it's enough for that little road to handle. Don't get me wrong, having the biking trail and the walking trail that was built at the end of the road this year is great. I love using it, but when we had the dump trucks coming in and out and doing the construction every day, sometimes it was hard getting in and out of the road for the time that it's going to take to build this property, and then adding those 15 houses, possibly two cars per thing, 182 times people are coming in and out, I just think in that 300, 350-foot spot is a lot to ask for on that little stretch of Prospect Road at that point in time. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much for listening.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak in opposition to this rezoning request?
I actually live on Portsmouth Boulevard. I live like three houses down from Prospect.
Can you please just state your name and address?
Yes, my name's Michelle World. I live 1108 Portsmouth Boulevard. I live three houses down from Prospect Lane, and just like he stated, it's a lot of traffic as it is coming out of Prospect Lane since they build the retirement home, assisted living home back there. And sometime when I'm coming home down Portsmouth Boulevard and I have to do the U-turn to go home, it's a lot of traffic waiting for them to come down Prospect Lane coming out. I have to sit there and wait for them coming out to get on Portsmouth Boulevard. And you build the other homes there, it's going to be another traffic, so more traffic coming down, they have to wait so me to go, for me to do U-turn to go home. And like he said, when traffic is blocked up on 58, like if they have an accident and everybody's coming off the interstate, I have sat there and watched 58 get blocked up, and it's like deadlock. You cannot go anywhere in front of my house. Now, if you build more houses, and like he said, it's going to be terrible, people trying to go home or get anywhere and suffer if something happens. So just like he said, you build the other homes, it's going to be too much traffic, and it's just too much to handle right there on 58, on Prospect Lane, and like he said, Prospect Lane is just a little street, and like I've been at my house over 20 years now. So I have seen a lot of traffic up and down on Portsmouth Boulevard, I've seen a lot of traffic down Prospect Lane, so I just concur to the young gentleman that just came and spoke. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak in opposition to this rezoning request?
I'm sorry. I apologize, Commissioner. I have a letter from Willie Way, Willie May, who lives at 202 Prospect Road, and she wanted me to read this for you. I haven't read it yet, I don't know what it says, so if it says anything bad, I apologize. I have no idea. But it's dated December 19, 2021. It says, "Dear Sir or Ma'am, first I would like to offer my apologies for not being in attendance today due to previous obligations. I've been a resident of Prospect Road since 2005. I have thoroughly enjoyed my street and neighborhood surroundings. We live on a dead-end street with minimal traffic, and the senior living home at the end of our street is probably the only reason that we have as much traffic as we do. I'm in full support of one or two traditional family homes being constructed, and I understand our economic is growing, our economy, sorry, I apologize, is growing and change isn't inevitable. However, I ask that you take in consideration of leaving our street and the immediate adjacent parcel zoning the way it is. Our street mostly consists of homeowners that have lived in the residential zoning area for a long time, and their homes have been here since the street's existence. I humbly plead with you not to change the zoning for the parcels across the street from our home. Allow multiple unit structures or commercial infrastructure on our streets so close to the existing homes would be a major issue. Our street is not a main fairway, and it's a dead-end street. Allowing multiple units to be placed on the parcel would not be comparable, would not be compatible to what exists currently. I am an elderly homeowner, and so are 95% of the other homeowners on this street. We ask that you take in consideration our living status and future neighboring status by leaving it the way it is. We don't need extra traffic concerns, noise complaints, mixed commercial and residential issues on our little road, and it has been, road that has been a place for a comfortable living for so long. Thank you for taking time on these matters and to this consideration. Sincerely, Ms. Willie May Mayfield, Prospect Road resident." Thank you for your time again.
Thank Ms. Mayfield for her inabstentional report. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in opposition to this rezoning request?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Gwendolyn Anderson, and I'm at 1102 Portsmouth Boulevard, and I just want to concur with my neighbors. It's going to be a hassle, and I do like development, but 15 houses on that little piece of land is going to be a bit much, and that's all I want to say. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in opposition to this request?
My name is George Smith. I'm a minister, I'm a minister of Suffolk. I stay in the last house on 223 Prospect Road. I know exactly what they're saying, because there had been time when I came home, I couldn't get down my street, so I had to go through the back trail where they got a walking trail and come in. And there had been time when the street was blocked up, and I needed to go to the store. I had to go the path through the woods and get back. There's too much traffic already on that street, because when the fire engines and the rest of the squad comes there often, because the home that's next to where I live, and that blocks up everything. If I had to leave out, I got to wait until they put the patient on the rest of the squad, and when they do that there, and take all that stuff, I'm concerned, because if something very important that I had to get to or something happened, I got to wait a long time, and sometimes sickness, it can be very urgent. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in opposition to this request?
Good evening, Chairman. My name is Debra World. I live on 112 Portsmouth Boulevard, and my house is two doors down from Prospect Road. I live on 1102 Portsmouth Boulevard, and my house is two doors down from Prospect Road, and I feel the same way as my neighbors. The driveway, as you're going down Prospect Road, is a little teeny, little, small road. And, and it's hard for us to get in, and it's hard for us to get out. If y'all add any more to us, it's going to make my list worse, and that's all I have to say. Y'all have a blessed day.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in opposition to this request? If not, would the proponents like to offer a rebuttal?
Yes, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, the, the main concern that we have listened to by numerous people is traffic. We can't change the traffic on Portsmouth Boulevard, that's going to be heavy regardless. I mean, look at C Street and all of the houses that emptying, the people that actually use C Street for access to 58 right now, and now we're coming down to Prospect. There's a reason that this area was put in the urban growth corridor, and that's because it's the area where we want some density so people can find jobs near, near the city. I mean, there's a purpose for these long-term planning thoughts and reasons we have. It's mainly so that citizens can use the city in an efficient manner. And so as we spread people out away, as it is now, that land's not being utilized fully to its, to its potential. There is always going to be change, and these are philosophical issues that we all have to address, but Suffolk is a growing city. Is Prospect Road or Prospect Lane too narrow? Well, my client measured it at 18 to 20 feet. It, it appears narrow because it doesn't have curbing guttering, if my memory serves me, so it may appear that, but two cars can get by on Prospect. We are offering as a part of this to put in a turn lane off of, off of Portsmouth Boulevard that does not exist, so that's going to add safety. If we go with the president's zoning, we're going to put nine units in, so we're adding six. We're not adding 15, we're adding six. Six, nine are going to go in one way or the other, and the city's getting a turn lane to get in to make 58 safer to get into this subdivision. It's, and I can appreciate how the residents feel, and you get this all the time. People are not against, people are never against progress and development unless it's near them, and then we hear it, and that's what you listen to on a regular basis. We believe that this fits into the city's needs, it fits into what has been planned for the city, and we're not asking to maximize the density of what, of the RU. All we're asking for is, is to go from 29 to 46, which is six units is what the reality of it is. And that will give us, it will give a nice, it's going to just be a pleasant, small community with 15 houses. That's not a lot. I know if you live on Prospect Street and you're, you're used to six houses, that seems like a lot. But change is coming. This is a very minor request that we've made. We've minimized the number of units, impartial because we see the same things they do, that you don't want so much traffic coming into that area. We've attempted to accommodate that need by restricting ourselves just to a request for six additional units, and that is a part of our proffer. So we would ask that you approve it. I understand the concerns of, of all of the good citizens that have spoken to you, but we believe this is a well-thought-out, safe subdivision that will be actually add to the value of the homes on Prospect Street. Obviously, down the road, the city can come in and, and use its right-of-way and improve Prospect Street. That's what the city will do. As growth comes, the city comes behind it and improves the roadways. It's usually the growth comes first and then you get a roadway. The city's not going to improve Prospect Street with six houses on it, it's not going to happen. So it's a chicken-or-the-egg case. I think that it will happen, the improvements will happen, but it's safe as it is, and I would, I would invite y'all to go out there and look at the layout of Prospect Street if you so desire, but we feel we have a good plan, and we're not over utilizing these, this lot. I appreciate y'all's consideration.
Does anyone have any additional comments on behalf of this rezoning request? If not, we will close the public hearing. I turn to the commissioners for questions, comments, or a motion.
I think my question is probably better directed at Mr. Goomis. This is the second time lately where the construction of roads or something, something else that we've approved has made the roads that people use crumble. Is there a way that we could fit all of that into the initial plan, the CUPs, the RZNs? Is there a way for us to do that?
Well, road maintenance and improvements are a responsibility of the Department of Public Works Transportation. Projects are worked into the, the capital improvements program based on a priority need, limited resources, looking for, for, provide improvements where, where appropriate. And in this particular case, the, as I, the improvements that are, are being proffered are in, in addition to what the TIA would require, and so. Other than that, I would, would refer my, your question to, to traffic engineering with regards to.
Okay. Because I, I've driven this, I've driven on that road a lot in the last 60 years, because Vermael, Mr. Vermael Bird lives right there. And in fact, I thought Barbara was going to be here, so I was just wondering, if the road is crumbling, 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 and you're going to do construction, that's going to make the road crumble some more, I'll just, it just seems like it ought to be something that we could build into the construction. I don't know. I was pushing, but.
Ms. Chairman, I do have a question maybe for the traffic engineer, so maybe that'll, I'll go back on that.
Yes, sir.
First question, is there anything in the, on the agenda, to your knowledge, for improvements to the, to the street going, going in, into the neighborhood?
Well, road maintenance is different from an improvement. There's, there are no improvements scheduled at this time or projected for Prospect. Road maintenance is a totally different issue. If we have issues out there where the road is damaged because of a construction project, that's certainly something that we can look at and, and address as part of our maintenance program.
Okay. Second question is, it mentions the, the median would be modified. Would that include a left-turn lane for turning off of Portsmouth Boulevard onto Prospect Road?
Currently, there's an existing eastbound left-turn lane.
So there is an existing one there? I didn't see that, I didn't look for it, but, okay, that's fine. That's, that's what I had.
Currently, the, the median break is a little bit misaligned from Prospect Road, so the applicant has proffered to improve that, to widen it, so it makes it safer for that left-turn movement coming out, and then also add the westbound right-turn lane.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions for the traffic engineer while he's at the podium?
I, I, I have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Goodman.
If the lawyer would come back for just a moment, they've been trying to get me to speak around here, so. They've been trying to get me to speak, and I guess this is my time to speak.
Yes, sir.
If the community is concerned about the narrowness of the, the street, and you said there is no curbing and such.
That's the best of my, and I believe that my client could probably answer the question regarding the present condition of the street better than I could.
Right.
Or Mr. Arnett could probably do a better job with that question.
I've been down that street, I'm thinking there is, there is not any curbing. So if, if, if it would make them feel a lot more comfortable with trying to widen the street, would your clients be willing to accommodate at least those citizens? Those on Portsmouth Boulevard is a whole new, different ballgame. But those who've been living there for years are concerned about the traffic and being able to get around, ambulance and all those things coming back and forth out of there. You said, you, you measured it in a safe.
Well, we measured this 18 to 20 feet is the, is the width of the street.
Right.
You know, we're only putting in a total of 15 units. We could put nine in, it, it's going to be very difficult economically on that number of units would be my guess, but I would really defer to Mr. Arnett on that question as to whether or not it would be economically feasible for the, you're asking if the developer would be willing to improve the street, is that the essence of the question?
Yes, they, they want to make the money off the property, and they ought to be willing to invest some back into, I believe, the community, just a little bit, not a whole lot.
That's a reasonable question, but since I don't know what the bottom line is and what the cost would be, everything comes down to the bottom line, and, and sometimes it, obviously, there's got to be some proportion there, and Mr. Goodman, I am not in a position to answer that question as we speak. If I could, I would. I would be glad to take it up with my client, but right now I cannot honestly answer that question.
Well, I'm quite sure that the community will, would, wouldn't, you all going to do what you're going to do with what you got to do with, but if it's going to please the community with trying to help them to feel comfortable when they drive out, then I think you might want to pose that too.
You know, I've lived here a long time, and I want the community comfortable too. I'm, I'm with you on that one, but I just don't know the answer to your question. I think Mr. Arnett would like to speak.
Hello, I'm Bob Arnett, Principal with Coastal Virginia Developers and Moore's Point LLC. To answer your question about Prospect Road, we have measured from the entranceway of Portsmouth Boulevard all the way down to the end where Reverend Smith lives, and the average width of it's 20, 21 feet. It goes down, further down towards Mr. Smith to probably 18 feet. As far as curb and gutter, we are improving our section of the road and putting, you know, where our property connects to Prospect, we're improving that with curb and gutter, and probably widening the road too. And we're putting sidewalk there. I'm not sure of the footage, but probably 100 feet, maybe 150 feet, something like that. And you know, as, as development goes and developers come in, they improve their section of the road frontage on existing right-of-way. I think the most important thing that we're doing is that we're putting that turn lane in. I mean, I go up and down that road as many, I mean, as half a dozen times a day, and there is some traffic congestion at times up there, but putting that right-turn lane in, I think is, you know, is extremely important. I know when I was talking to Jason, the traffic about it, and it wasn't required by our traffic study, we, I told him we would go ahead and put it in simply because it's the right thing to do. So we're looking out for the traffic and doing as much as we can considering the size of the job. I mean, we can get nine lots by right without a right-turn lane, so I think adding six additional lots and, and getting the turn lane, I think it's a win-win for, you know, for the city and for us, and for the residents, because it makes a safer environment.
May I ask a question to Mr. Arnett? Mr. Arnett, you just sparked the question. So if we deny this request and you just have nine houses, there's not going to be a right-turn lane?
Well, I'm saying was not required by right.
Well, yeah, I know. I'm just.
That means zoning by right, now we can do nine, we can do nine lots.
Okay, that didn't answer my question, but.
Okay, I mean, we, without coming here, you know, for this zoning request, we could submit a engineering plan for nine lots on that piece of property, because it's zone RLM now, which is 2.9 lots per acre, it's about three and a half acres of usable land.
Okay, my question was a yes or no answer, but I can get it, so that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's my answer.
Oh, oh, thanks.
I would make a motion to deny RZN 2021-013.
Second motion. We have a motion to deny from Commissioner Hicks and a second from Commissioner Edwards. Discussion of the motion. Mr. Goomis, take the vote, please.
Commissioner Creekmore.
No.
Commissioner Eberwin.
No.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Commissioner Staler.
No.
Chairman Rector.
No.
Motion fails by a vote of three to four with Commissioner Creekmore, Commissioner Eberwin, Commissioner Staler, and Chairman Rector voting in opposition.
Would anybody like to offer an opposing motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that RZN 2021-013 conditional be approved.
With the conditions?
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Creekmore and a second from Commissioner Staler to approve. Discussion of the motion. Mr. Goomis, will you call the vote, please?
Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
No.
Commissioner Goodman.
No.
Commissioner Hicks.
No.
No.
Commissioner Staler.
Yes.
Chairman Rector.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of four to three with Commissioner Edwards, Commissioner Goodman, and Commissioner Hicks voting in opposition.
That will move forward to City Council at their November 17 meeting. Our next and last public hearing for the afternoon is rezoning request, RZN 2021-0015, 5100 Nansman Parkway Apartment Complex. Mr. Goomis, if you'd read the caption, please.
Rezoning request, RZN 2021-015, 5100 Nansman Parkway Apartment Complex, submitted by John M. Babino, BCO Asset Management LLC agent, on behalf of C Burton Cutright HBKC2 LLC applicant, on behalf of, excuse me, Luther J. Upton III, Upton Farms Incorporated, property owner, in accordance with 31304 and 31305 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to rezone the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from RLM residential low-medium-density zoning district to RU18 residential urban 18 zoning district for property located at 5100 Nansman Parkway, zoning map 20, parcel 19. The area, the affected area is further identified as being located in the Cypress Voting Borough, zoned RLM residential low-medium-density zoning district. The 2035 comprehensive plan designates this area as. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to rezoning request, RZN 2021-015. Alexis Baker will provide staff report.
Good afternoon. Again, the subject property is located at 5100 Nansman Parkway, zoning map twenty, parcel nineteen. The applicant is proposing a change in zoning from residential low-medium density to RU18, or residential urban eighteen zoning district, to allow for two hundred and four apartment units. As mentioned, the city's 2035 Comprehensive Plan identifies the property as being located within the Northern Growth Area Suburban Use District. Again, the subject property is currently zoned RLM Residential Low-Medium Zoning District, which allows for single-family homes with a minimum lot size of fifteen thousand square feet and a maximum density of two point nine units per acre. Currently on the site is agricultural uses, a vacant single-family residence, an out-of-use cattle pen, and several interconnected equipment storage and maintenance structures. To the north is residential zoned RLM, that's Suffolk Meadows. To the south is, of course, what you saw before is, is a, what you, RZN 2021-012, which you already acted on. And also, there's the B2 that was prior rezoning, 2020-002, which was rezoned from M2 to B2. To the east is, again, RLM, and specifically, it's the Zion Community Church. And to the west is a railroad right-of-way. There's residential RLM medium, low-medium zoning district, and the residential portion is part of Suffolk Meadows and includes recreation area and single-family homes. The purpose of this rezoning request is to allow the applicant to build two hundred and four apartment units. That would be the maximum allowed under this zoning district. While not proffered, the conceptual plan shows that the apartments will be housed in two four-story buildings, each with ninety-eight units, and two smaller buildings, each with four units. Additionally, the eleven point three-six acre site will be accessed from two points on Nansman Parkway, including a full access approximately nine hundred feet west of Shoulders Hill Road and Northgate Commerce Park, and a right-out-only access approximately one thousand three hundred feet west of Shoulder Hill Road and Northgate Commerce Parkway. The applicant will provide three hundred and twenty-seven parking spaces, which would be more than the minimum required parking of two hundred and four spaces to accommodate residents. Additionally, Nansman Parkway is part of the Special Corridor Overlay District. The applicant has indicated on the conceptual plan that all SCOD requirements will be addressed. In addition to SCOD requirements, there are, there's a resource protection area on the property. The applicant has shown that they will stay outside the hundred-foot RPA buffer. Finally, prior to site plan approval, the applicant would also be required to adhere to open space requirements, requiring a minimum of two hundred square feet of usable open space for each multifamily development unit, unless the open space requirement is reduced by fifty percent by the zoning administrator with a provision of amenities for active recreation. The Comprehensive Plan sets specific themes and policies related to land use. Again, specifically, that's related to transportation, open space, and environment, which should be contemplated when evaluating a rezoning application. Additionally, the application must comply with the requirements in the Unified Development Ordinance, specifically the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance. The specific policies under the 2035 Comprehensive Plan related to the application are as follows: Policies 2-1, keep development focused in designated growth areas; and Policy 2-2, assure that development occurs in a predictable and orderly manner. The rezoning request is, of course, within the Northern Growth Area Suburban Use District. While development is concentrated in the growth area, the suburban use district is least dense within the northern growth area. The density recommended by the suburban use district is one to five dwelling units per acre, and that also calls for single-family dwelling units in traditional residential subdivisions. By requesting a zoning designation of RU18, even at the highest recommended density of five units per acre, the density would be nearly three times the recommended, recommended density for this area. Less dense alternatives to the requested rezoning district include RC, residential compact zoning with a density of seven point three units per acre, RU residential urban zoning district with a density of ten point nine units per acre, and both those zoning districts would allow the apartments by right. Next, Policy 2-4, promote compatibility in land use patterns, and specifically, under that policy is Action 2-4D. Within that action, it says, consider allowing higher-density residential development than the prescribed in certain areas of suburban use district, where transportation corridors and infrastructure are already established, and where the proposed use is compatible with adjacent uses and the established development pattern. The proposed zoning, rezoning does not comply with Policy 2-4. Traffic engineering has expressed concerns regarding the level of service at the two nearest intersections. The 2021 overall level of service for the Nansman Parkway-Shoulders Hill intersection is Level of Service C, while Nansman Parkway-Kings Highway operates at a Level of Service F. In the future scenarios provided to staff by the applicant, Nansman Parkway-Shoulders Hill Road and Nansman Parkway-Kings Highway intersections operate at a Level of Service D and F respectively. The future build and no build scenarios would not meet the requirements as established within Section 31-601, which is the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance. That requires a minimum of Level of Service C in the Northern Growth Area for any rezoning to a zoning district. That would increase the number of permitted dwelling units. And finally, Policy 5-1, relate the availability of municipal services and facilities to the location and pace of growth. And within Policy 5-1 is Action 5-1B, continue to tie development approval to the adequacy and funding of public facilities. As presented by the applicant, this proposal does not adequately mitigate anticipated off-site impacts to the school system. Specifically, there is not adequate capacity at the high school level, and that would be Nansman River High School. At the time of application submitted, the deficit in student capacity for Nansman River High School was negative five hundred and fifty students, and that included students generated from committed development. The proposed development would yield no more than two hundred and four apartments. After accounting for students generated through by-right development, a maximum of five additional students would be generated by this development. The current capital improvement plan estimates that student capacity may be advanced at twenty-nine thousand six hundred and eighty dollars per student, and that, again, is based on, based on the construction cost and the proposed number of students for that school. Again, as mentioned, in addition to school capacity issues, the intersections related to the proposed rezoning will operate at a Level of Service D or lower. And then there's Policy 6-1, encourage development of balanced and diverse housing stock throughout the city. And under that is Action 6-1A, ensure that the city's land use regulations allow for a variety of housing types, such as single-family detached and single-family attached and multifamily. While the proposed development would increase the availability of multifamily dwelling units, the proposed zoning district, RU18, conflicts with several other Comprehensive Plan policies. The Comprehensive Plan is constructed through use districts that have been designated to achieve a balance and diversification of housing stock throughout the city. The multifamily projects established within the Mixed Use Core, Core Support, and Inner Ring Suburban Use District work to balance the single-family development that largely takes place within the suburban use district, of which the property in question is located. A development of this density is more appropriate in the Mixed Use Core and Core Support districts. Next, the application was reviewed under the Unified Development Ordinance, specifically the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance for compliance. First, in Section 31-408F of the Unified Development Ordinance, the RU18 zoning district is defined as a high-density district allowing for primarily single-family attached and multifamily dwelling units and interconnected and multimodal neighborhoods at a maximum density of eighteen units per acre. The district is intended to provide greater housing options, be retail-supported complement in existing surrounding neighborhood, and shorten travel times of the residents. RU18 is more ideally supportive for the Core Support Use District due to its density and scale. Again, the rezoning request does not fulfill this section as the subject property is not within the Core Support Use District. Next, the purpose and intent of the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance of the UDO is to ensure that public facilities are available to support new development and associated impacts, and that each public facility meets or exceeds the level of service standards established by the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. No rezoning request should be approved, which would cause a reduction in the level of service standards for any public facility impacted. While public utilities and stormwater issues were adequately addressed within the application, there are concerns, as stated in the Comprehensive Review of the rezoning request, for public transportation and schools. The submitted transportation impact analysis submitted to staff indicated that the Nansman Parkway-Shoulders Hill Road-Northgate Commerce Parkway intersection will operate at a Level of Service D, and the Nansman Parkway-Kings Highway intersections will operate at a Level of Service F in the build scenario. In accordance with Section 31-601 of the Unified Development Ordinance, all intersections within the study area must operate at Level of Service C or above in the Northern Growth Area. The transportation impact assessment also indicated that installation of a traffic signal will be warranted at the Nansman Parkway-Kings Highway intersection in the build condition. Again, traffic engineering does not support the rezoning request without demonstration that adequate public facilities will be available at the time of completion. Finally, adequate capacity is not available at the high school level. At the time of application, deficit in student capacity for Nansman River High School was minus five hundred and fifty students, which included students generated from committed development. No proffers were offered to address transportation or school concerns. So in summary, staff finds that the proposal rezoning request, RZN 2021-015, is not consistent with the provisions of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. Specifically, the rezoning request does not comply with Section 31-601 of the Unified Development Ordinance, as adequate public facilities are not met at the high school level, nor do the nearest arterial intersections meet the minimum required level of service. Additionally, staff finds that the density does not comply with the recommendations of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Specifically, the proposal is not appropriate for suburban use district, as allowable density for the RU18 zoning district would be more than three times the recommended density for the use district, and could not be supported by the current transportation infrastructure. Accordingly, staff recommends denial of rezoning request, RZN 2021-015. This concludes my presentation, and staff will stand by for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you for that report, Ms. Baker.
Thanks.
We will now open the public hearing. There'll be ten minutes for the proponents, fifteen minutes for the opponents, and then five minutes for the proponents. Who would like to speak on behalf of this request?
Good afternoon. John Babino, on behalf of the applicant. I'd just like to point out, in the, in the chamber today, Bert Cutwright is here. He's one of the principals involved in the, with the applicant process, with BCO, with the HBKC2, and also the land owner, Mr. Upton, is present in the chamber. Several things I'd like to, to focus in on, if I may. Firstly, I can address the two issues that came up quickly and often by staff, and we have had some conversation with staff. As you know, I previously appeared before you for the rezoning to B2 of the convenience gas and fast-food restaurant across the street on the corner. We'll be developing that site. And so I'm very familiar with the, we're very familiar with the intersection, we're very familiar with the traffic patterns. To address the schools quickly, the school system is already down five hundred and fifty students. The, by applying the code, looking at the, and the application of the guidelines, looking at the, the density, it comes up with five, the reality is, five high school students. The reality is, is that five, five high school students probably won't come out of there. We have a lot of developments across, not only the state, but over on, on Bridge Road, as, as many of you, you know, and we have no high school students over there. Our mean ages of the residents and, and the apartment units, this is not a senior development, is somewhere between twenty-six and thirty-eight years old. Typically, that age group doesn't have high school students, so the burden on the elementary school and the middle school is, is probably more significant to look at in that regard, and there's no, no burden there. So in terms of high school burden, I don't think that's a reality, but certainly it is an element to consider. Secondly, with respect to traffic, whether we build or not there is, it's a D. The, the intersection goes, goes to D, you just approved a little, little bit ago, a few hours ago, or an hour or so ago. Tractor Supply, and Tractor Supply, you know, contacted us about helping to share an entrance there into our B2 parcel on the corner in order to satisfy the, the staff's recommendation in terms of traffic. So it's going to a D anyway, that intersection, King's Highway intersection is already an F. It's certainly the Northern Growth District, as one would believe, at least would, would say by the words, that it's looking for development and growth in that area. We're gonna contribute, if you look at the traffic engineer and report, impact study that we provided, somewhere between one point six and one point nine percent increase in the traffic pattern there, and typically apartment communities. Folks will, will go out in the morning time, they'll come in in the evening time. It's not a constant burden on the flow of traffic in and out all day long like a, a retail establishment might be. So although the numbers may present the way they do, you also have to look at the practicality of, of the flow of traffic. As you can see from the di, the diagram that's been provided to, to you in your packets, package to, in preparation for today, there's road improvements going all the way down to the railroad tracks with the right turn lane, the in and out lanes clearly demarked on the, on the plans. So we will be improving the roadway all the way down to the railroad tracks on that side of the property. Additionally, and I think probably key to the consideration is the transition that this kind of community creates. What you have there is, you have the railroad tracks, on the other side of the railroad tracks, you have a park. As you can see in our development, there's a lot of landscaping, and then there are certain setback requirements for residential dwelling units from the railroad tracks of the buildings. You have the parking lot as a buffer, and then you have, you have the buildings next, which are closer towards, towards the roadway. There are a number of amenities provided back there. There's a two hundred foot buffer, maybe a little bigger, a little, little wider than two hundred feet between the back of the property where the RPA is going over to the neighborhood behind it that's heavily, heavily treed and has, has a bit of a ravine that comes down through there with a little, a little stream. All of that has been, has been mapped, and the, the city, it's been confirmed by the Army Corps and confirmed by the city in terms of the delineation of the, of the wetlands out there. So there's a great buffer to the back. So we, and across the street, obviously, is M2, a couple of B2 rezonings, ours, and then the Tractor Supply. There's an industrial, there's a landscaping, as I understand it, outfit that's going back there too, in the, in the, in the M2, the heavy industrial. So to, to think that you're gonna build a few single-family houses across the street from this. from this would not really be a reality. So when you think of it in terms of the comprehensive plan, the designers and the folks, the planners that look at to develop the comprehensive plan have the best intentions when they do it, trying to forecast what might happen out there. But I'm confident Amazon wasn't forecast with a parking lot in the back with, for 300 tractor trailers, plus all the traffic coming in and out. And of course, they were able to build that by, that was by right back there, the zoning, as I understand it. And so therefore, there weren't any proffers or anything made towards improvement of the intersection, although the overburdening of the intersection is going to be significantly caused by that traffic coming in and out of the Amazon facility. So I think what we are doing is we are giving a vision out there that acts as a transition. Clearly, single-family homeowners are not going to build houses that, in this, looking at the economics of it, would probably have to be somewhere in the $400,000 to $500,000 range for a house, living with a border of railroad tracks and looking across at Amazon trucks coming and going, a Tractor Supply, and an industrial, if you will, park. I'm confident that that property would not be developable in that regard, and economically, it otherwise doesn't make sense. From a density standpoint, we spoke to staff early on. We had planned and originally filed as RU-24, speaking to staff, we realized the concerns that they pointed out to us. We dropped the unit numbers down from somewhere in the 272 to 204. We took one of the buildings in the back out in order to get down to the 204 and then resubmit it as RU-18. In order to provide amenities for folks, walking trails and pools and things like that, you have to have density. If you don't have density, you can't provide those things that make this. We don't want a complex. It's, those are, that's not, that's not a pleasant sound when you say you're building an apartment complex. We build communities, we build communities that have amenities, where people want to come and move and live, walk their dogs, have some nature trails, if you will, in the back. And so that's what we've done here, and that's what we're able to do if you allow us to move forward with this development. In addition, and I always bring this up because it is something to consider, at least another element, not everything is dollars and cents, but from a fiscal impact standpoint, this creates revenue for the city of Suffolk. And the revenue that is set forth in the report that's with the fiscal impact, physical impact study, fiscal impact study, excuse me, which has been provided, provides for after all uses by the city, and in this, it's an excess of $240,000 per year moving forward after stabilization. So it also makes fiscal sense from that standpoint as another component. So for all those reasons, we would ask for a favorable vote in support of the rezoning of this project. I'm available to answer any questions, obviously, and we'll come back up as needed.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak very briefly in support of this If not, is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition to this request? If not, Mr. Babino, would you like to add any other further comments?
I'm available to answer questions. I've probably spoken more than I needed to.
Thank you. We will now close the public hearing. I turn to the commissioners for questions, comments, or a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for denial of RZN 2021-015.
We have a motion for denial from Commissioner Eberwine and a second from Commissioner Hicks. Discussion of the motion. No discussion. Mr. Gumas, will you call for the vote?
Commissioner Crickmore.
No.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Hold on for just, no, yes is no.
Yes means no.
Okay. Yes is no in this case. Sometimes we've got to clarify it. Anyway, yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Commissioner Staler.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Chairman Rector.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of six to one.
This will go to City Council at their November 17 meeting with a recommendation from this commission for denial.
Thank you.
That concludes our public hearing portion of this meeting. Now, bring up any new business, Mr. Gumas?
Yes, provide a report with regards to the results of City Council meeting of September 15th and then also October 6th. Rezoning request, RZN 2021-008, Hillpoint Farms Plan Development. This, of course, you'll recall, was the modification of the plan to develop the golf course. That was approved with conditions. Rezoning request, RZN 2021-016, 3332 Sleepy Hole Road. You'll recall, this was a rezoning request to go from RR to RLM for possibly up to three residential lots. That was approved with conditions. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2021-014, Bennett's Creek Commons. This was the proposed expansion of the apartment complex at Bennett's Road Commons. That motion, that item was approved with conditions. And then conditional use permit request, CUP 2021-019. This was Western Tidewater Community Service Board for expansion of the facility for residential physical and mental rehabilitation up on Godwin Boulevard, and that was approved with conditions, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have any other new business to bring before this commission this afternoon?
Yes, the committee and ordinances met and would like to offer the following motion. To initiate an ordinance text amendment and to schedule a public hearing on November 16th, 2021, in order to amend section thirty-one dash six oh one, adequate public facilities of the UDO, for the purpose of, for the purpose to update and refine the Unified Development Ordinance to change in circum, due to changes in circumstances.
Second motion. We have a motion from Commissioner Hicks and a second from Commissioner Staler to bring forward that ordinance text amendment change. Is there any discussion of the motion? If not, let's see if we can do this with a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is approved. We will bring that up at our next meeting. Does any of the commissioners have any comments that they'd like to make at this time?
I've got a comment, please. I'd like to commend Mr. Rector for taking over chair job today.
Good job.
As a rookie, he did a great job.
I'd like to point out, the building is still standing.
Well, I think Mr. Benton and Mr. Singleton would be very proud. They've taught you well. Thank you again.
Thank you for those words of encouragement, and I pray and hope for Mr. Singleton's return next month.
Mr. Chairman, I have a.
Commissioner Edwards.
One long comment. It's going to be very long. It is. I was a third grader at Mount Zion Elementary School back in the late 1980s, and I had this terrific teacher by the name of Miss Rhoda Peters. She came to Suffolk for one year. She was from El Paso, Texas, and she came in September, like mid-September, and so we all was taken out of our regular classes to take her to her class. It was only 15 students in the class, and they took an old closet and made a classroom for us. And some great people was in that class, Mario Fault, Brian Savage, Jerry Little. I mean, that's unbelievable, people going through great phases in life. Well, Miss Peters taught us to read and journal and all these things at the age of nine. One day, Miss Peters came to me and gave me a challenge, and she wanted me to go beyond myself. These are the days before Google and things like that, where you just go online and find stuff. You had to do it the old-fashioned way. And I took the challenge, and I did what I was supposed to do, and time went by, nothing happened. One day, it was in like late February, late school year, I got a call over the loudspeaker to report to the principal's office. I've never been sent to the principal's office in my life. And the principal at that time was a lady by the name of Miss Christina Gray. And Miss Gray was behind her desk, and I walked in almost shaking. And Miss Gray took out this envelope, my name on it. And you don't suppose to run in school, but man, I jetted from the principal's office straight to my classroom. And I screamed at Miss Peters. He did it. It was Black History Month, and just calls had just happened in Panama. And Miss Peters asked me to write a letter to General Colin Powell to do my Black History Report on him. This is before Google and everything. And he wrote me back as an eighth grader, and wrote a personal letter signed by him with his biography enclosed, and I wrote a report. Fast forward the tape, couple of years, I won't say my age. I was able to go to Washington, DC, have a private meeting with Secretary Powell. He was very gracious, and I reminded him of the story, although he didn't remember it, I told him it happened, and we had a good laugh. I say all that to say, the world lost a magnificent man and American yesterday in General Colin Powell. And on behalf of the planning commission in the city of Suffolk, I would just like to offer my condolences to his family, and I want to thank him for making the dreams of a little eight-year-old boy come true. And with that, I say thank you.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Commissioner Edwards, we thank you very much for those comments. I have followed, and followed Colin Powell through a lot of his career, and I think he was very much an inspiration to a lot of people. He stuck to his principles, stuck to his guns from beginning to end, and I think what he did with you shows the importance, not only of the impact that teachers can have on your lives, on our lives, but also the impact that public figures can have. And that's why anybody operating in the public domain has a responsibility to the community to behave and act in an utmost responsible and respectful manner. So thank you very much for those comments. And I think this comes on the heels. Hadn't there been national teacher appreciation recently? Me and the husband and father of an educator, you'd think I'd have, but we appreciate teachers every day in my house. Nobody has any further comments?
I have a comment. I don't know if anybody else was available this past weekend, but I'd like to congratulate the organizers again of Driver Days. And it was a great turnout. Of course, the weather was perfect for that, but I do, again, want to recognize the organizers of that annual event out there.
We will now stand adjourned.